It's on.
I'd like to call the regular over here.
Put that one down further.
Like to call this regular meeting of the German Township Trustees to order. Do you rise for Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. Mr. Heaton, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Potter.
Here.
All are called in.
Sir, comments. Mark, do you have a report from the JED? Come on up.
Mark Keener, 7865 Jamaica Road. JED update not too much, however, we have a bank account. There's money in the bank account. We've got our first bank statement and my first order of checks. Unfortunately, the bank statement, the checks are still at City Building, but I'll be getting those Wednesday from Randy Steiber. And that's about it. So we are operating. We've got another meeting on Wednesday here. And I anticipate this will be our first meeting, actually without the attorney there. So forward to that. All I do is watch the bank account.
Subcontractors being picked.
You're more than welcome to attend the meeting, though, and ask Mr. Schaller, who generally sits right there in your chair. So. All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can we just move on to the Fiscal Officers' Report?
Good evening again, everyone. First of all, I've given you the minutes from March February thirteenth meeting. Are there any corrections?
The only thing I found in the visitor comments, first paragraph, it was broken to the broker. Everyone, careful. Talking about trouble.
Should be broke or should be broken?
Should be broker.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
And I wrote broken.
No, you wrote broke.
You're okay.
Okay, let's find it.
So it's under visitor comments, like the first.
Fourth line right towards the middle. The city of Columbus.
Oh, broker. I see it.
That's all I think I found.
Any other changes?
I didn't.
It's landed on auto correct.
At fingers there, although I am really armed, but.
If there are no other corrections, could I have a motion to approve as amended?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the twelve to thirteen twenty-three meeting as amended.
Seconds.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
To. Okay, I've also given you the February financials reports. You have the fund status at the end of February. You have the year-to-date cash summary by fund. You have the month of February cash summary by fund, the February receipts, and the February payments. And I have no unusual items to mention to you. Are there any questions, though, about anything? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the reports and authorize the payment of all the February bills?
I will take a motion to approve the February financial reports and authorize the payment of February bills warrants five oh six five five, five oh six six three, and vouchers eighty-nine through one seventy-five for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to announce that the two thousand and twenty-two transactions are now available for review on the Ohio checkbook website. And the easiest way to get to the Ohio checkbook is by using the hyperlink on the homepage of our township website. So the audit can be reviewed by going a slightly more complicated rate, or not the audit, the financial statements. And then the checkbook easily done using a hyperlink. And if anybody wants to, they can make an appointment and come and see the financial statements, the hard copies. Okay, I wanted to point out that I got an email from the Board of Elections with the ballot language for the pool levy on the May ballot. And I'm going to read it to you. I'm not happy with it. It says, "It will sail the ballot, a renewal of a tax for the benefit of German Township Incorporated and unincorporated for parks and recreational purposes that the county auditor estimates will collect ninety-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars annually at a rate not exceeding one-half mil for each one dollar of taxable value, which amounts to thirteen dollars for each hundred thousand dollars of the county auditor's praised value for five years, commencing in two thousand and twenty-three, first due in calendar two thousand and twenty-four." And what you will notice is the ballot language does not state that the levy is for the pool. It says it's for parks and recreation. Board of Elections, when I questioned them about that, informed me that the Ohio Secretary of State requires that ballot language must exactly match previous ballot language. So apparently, back in two thousand and thirteen and also in two thousand and eighteen, the ballot language purpose was only for parks and recreation. So our township voters should be assured that the taxes raised by this levy will only be used for the Germantown Swimming Pool. I've informed the city about the confusing ballot language, which I think they will be highlighting in the next city's new, the city's next newsletter, which comes out in early April.
So does that mean the pool levy has never handled? A vote for this, the pool?
It has, but apparently it's a levy never said it was for the pool in past votes.
Thought, and I'd have to go back through my files, but I thought it said pool or swimming pool in parentheses. It was always a parks and rec. I thought it said swimming pool in the ballot.
And Mr. Keener, that's how I sent it to the Board of Elections, and they changed it. So.
I'm not happy, but well, the good news is it's passed the last several times using that language, so.
So just to add, I attended the council meeting Monday, and I did bring that up through the citizen forum and discuss. They really didn't say anything. I think if it gets in the newsletter, that'll help.
And we'll just have to make sure it goes on to our website and, you know, we continue to talk about it.
Yeah, because it's confusing because they just passed levy in two thousand and twenty-one for the parks and rec. So people look at that, they'll say, well, I just passed this levy. Why should I pay for it again?
That's right.
So that's where the confusion.
Exactly so. So if we ever do a replacement levy, we'll make sure that language gets in there, or swimming pool. But I guess as long as we continue to do renewals every five years, this will be an issue. I did receive from concerning the JED, I received from the board chair, Randy Steiber, notice of our obligation to pay our portion of the fifteen thousand dollar initial contribution that was set forth in the JED agreement. I sent you Mr. Steiber's letter, and even though this amount was detailed in the JED contract, when you approved it back in two thousand and twenty-one, I think it's appropriate that we do a resolution authorizing me to make that payment. The amount of the payment is five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That's thirty-five percent, which is the same percentage that we will receive from the tax collections. So I've given you resolution language, and we will make that resolution two thousand and twenty-three fifteen.
I'd like to introduce resolution two thousand and twenty-three fifteen, a resolution approving a five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar payment to the Valley View Joint Economic Development District, JED, in accordance with section seven of the JED contract approved by the contracting parties. The purpose of the payment is to help pay the initial legal, administrative, and other costs generally identified in the JED contract.
Second.
Is there any discussion of resolution two thousand and twenty-three fifteen? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You indicated at the February meeting that you wanted to move forward with an electric and gas aggregation contract with Trabel LLC. The prosecutors have reviewed the energy consulting and management agreement as well as, that was a draft, as well as approved it as to its form only. And then they've also reviewed a resolution that I also sent to you, and we will make that resolution two thousand and twenty-two sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three sixteen. If you're ready to move forward with that resolution.
Want to do that now? Or into new business, or old business?
Whatever you would like.
Maybe we can do it. Is that the copy of the resolution?
We've got to hear some place.
Sorry, because I don't.
Yeah. You're in it, or do you want to? I don't.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to introduce resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing the execution of an energy consulting and management agreement with Trabel LLC. Whereas Trabel LLC, a certified aggregator with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, PUCO, engages in the business of providing consulting services to aggregate and procure energy and/or energy-related services, products, and accounts. And whereas the township desires Trabel to perform an independent analysis and review of the township's electric and natural gas service usage and costs. And whereas the township desires Trabel to perform an independent analysis and review of electric and natural gas usage and costs for the potential aggregation of the electric and natural gas requirements determined township and residents. And whereas the township will require assistance. If the voters of Germantown should approve the aggregation of their electric and/or natural gas, the township desires Trabel to assist in the implementation of an aggregation program in the township retail electric and natural gas loads. And whereas Germant, the township desires to engage Trabel as its exclusive energy consultant and agent and grant Trabel exclusive rights to perform such energy-related services as described in and subject to the terms and conditions of an energy consulting and management agreement. And whereas the township now wishes to authorize the execution of the energy consulting and management agreement engaging the exclusive services of Trabel for the above and related purposes. Now therefore be resolved by the township as follows. Section one, the energy consulting and management agreement with Trabel, a copy of which is attached here, too, as Exhibit A is hereby approved. Section two, all formal actions of the township concerning and relating to passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the Germantown, or of the township. And all deliberations of township and any of its committees that resulted in such formation, action, took place in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including ORC one-two-one-point-two-two. Section three of this resolution shall be in full force and affect immediately upon adoption.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion of resolution two thousand and twenty-three sixteen?
Let me just a couple of things just to enlighten the, the. The, it'll be on the ballot on November seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, this November. Really, when I looked over the management agreement and the resolution, it really seemed very fair to me. Basically, it doesn't seem like it's any cost to the township, so. And I talked to Scott Bill Castro on the tenth, and he stated, so I want to make sure that Trabel will help assist getting the measure on the ballot and help market the ballot measure, hopefully get it passed. So that's what he kind of said that. That's good. Scott Hamilton sent me a letter that Trabel has sent out to all the residents of Miami Township sent out, sent a letter. And basically, it states that it's very easy to opt out. I think if people are worried that, oh, my God, I don't want to do this, there's three ways to opt out. It's very easy. I mean. As far as enrolling, the only thing, again, as far as any, anyone, the solar panels can enroll. They don't have the net metering where you can send, send your energy back to the company. So. So anyway, that's the way it is. Couple other things. There was interesting that Green County, the entire Green County signed a, a contract with, I don't remember the name, but it was four point four seven cents per kilowatt hour, which is the lowest I've seen. However, it was only for one year. So after a year, they're going to, it's almost like a teaser. Clear Creek Township signed a contract for six point eight six cents per kilowatt hour, and that's through May two thousand and twenty-five. The Miami Township was six point nine nine cents per kilowatt hour, and that's again through June two twenty-five. So it seems like most of the contracts are for two years, I think, which is probably a smart thing because of the way the utility markets. Again, net metering residents with solar panels can enroll. Mister, I asked Mr. Castro if he was able to contact Jackson Township to see if they wanted to get on as far as be a part of the aggregation with us, and he hasn't been able to contact. Hope we can, more, the more people you get, the more residents to the lower rate you're going to get. So if we can get our Jackson Township and/or farmers along with us, we may need to get. So I don't, again, I don't think there's a downside to this. It's easy to opt out if people think they're going to be forced into it. Plus, you're going to get to vote on it in November. If they don't like it, they'll vote against it in November. It'll be a dead issue if it goes down. So you have two chances. So if your neighbors, Abigail, you're Butler Township, Butler County, right? Butler rules somewhat affect you, but yeah, so people talk about. So anyway, and then again, I don't think there's a downside. I think that if we could save, save some money for the township. Scott, did you have anything else as far as the letter? I think Scott's on. Sam, the letter, he got the letter from the Miami Township residents. But no, I'm going to say no. Okay. Any other, do you guys have any questions about the?
I just note that it's free to opt out. It's easy to opt out if you don't want to be in it.
Like I said, you have two chances. You can vote against it in November, and then you can also opt out if that does pass. You can also opt out. I think that, like Mark, we were saying, as far as gas, I think we should put both on the ballot just in case, you know, there's enough people that have a gas supplier come in here to take it. And they may not, if it's just a small number. All I've got.
Any other discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-three sixteen is adopted. I have the signature page for the contract with Trabel. I will pass that down, and you can each sign it. I would start with the top row being Dr. Cross and Mr. Stubbs and Mr. Potter, you on the third row. While you're signing that, I will go forward. I did attend a meeting of the Western Regional Council of Governments, the WRG CG. And that was on February twenty-eighth. Mr. Stubbs was also there, and I will let you discuss it more in detail if you wish when you do your report. You may recall that I am this year's treasurer of the Montgomery County Township Association. I met with the MCTA president, George Ann Godsey, at a fifth-third branch in Harrison Township on March sixth, and I signed the bank account cards. And speaking of the MCTA, the next meeting is on March thirtieth at four P M. at the Montgomery County Business Solutions Center on Cincinnati Street in Dayton. I will be on vacation that week, so I will be unable to attend if anyone else wants to attend from the distance from the township. And with that, I am done.
Thank you, Nora. Police Department report chief?
Yeah, we got it. May sixth, Saturday, nine to eleven, shred it, dump it, bring your drugs, put into medications, and any items you wish shredded, we'll take care of those for you. Also, the board should have received copies of police reports annual review for two thousand and twenty-two, which we release every March. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or research them if I don't have any.
A question about shredding. Is that for Germantown residents, too, or is it?
That is for anybody. You can come from Toronto. We will shred your stuff. And the reason I say that is there are some political entities that make you show driver's license. We don't care. Right, you know, tell everybody. Go ahead.
Deb Cross, seven four four four, South Daggers. What do you need to shred in? In a box? In a bag? Does it matter?
Whatever you bring in, we have people bring them all different ways. Garbage bags, paper bags, boxes. Basically, what we do here is the officers assist the crew that actually run the truck, and they dump everything into big trash cans like the, like you see at the side of the road. They lift those up into the truck once it's full, and it dumps it in and shreds it. It'll shred CDs. It'll shred just about anything. So.
Binder clips.
Sorry?
You need to take binder clips off, I recall.
Yeah, because it's marks. There's no metal.
But I do know that they will, you can do compact this. What's that? You shredded CDs for me. Yeah. So I mean, it's not powerful enough. So it all good. Once it gets dumped in, and they just run that machine, and it shoots it out the back into their storage area of their truck. And so, yeah, if you want to bring them in boxes, that's fine. If you want to put them in bags. Sometimes, you know, now that we've been doing this for so long, we have people that show up with a little bit because they don't, a lot of things are paperless now. But they do still have some things they want shredded. So their bag may be very small, whereas ten years ago, they'd show up with a trunk full. But it doesn't matter. However much you want to bring, we'll shred it.
Next, you. Road Department.
I'd say one thing tonight. Just to let the board know, I'm getting ready to advertise for the two thousand and twenty-three chip seal program. Planning on putting that in the paper, I think, starting the twentieth of this month, and it'll run for two weeks. And then we'll be opening sealed bids at the next Board of Trustees meeting. So that'll be April.
And that you have that?
Yeah. I believe it's the tenth. The roads we're going to do this year tend to be is Germantown Liberty Road, Weaver Road, EB Road, which is from State Rock Ward to Sunsberry, Friend Road, which is from Brown's Run up to about where Ben DeGroot lives, that has a certain section of issue two money that we got. Has nothing to do with where he lives. It's just that's happened to be where that section stopped. Humor Shine Road in its entirety and Harris Road. Estimated cost for this, almost seven miles of road is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And like I said, hopefully, the bid opening will be on April tenth at the regular meeting. And that's all I have.
Probably want to get it for the parking lot?
Yeah. Obviously, that'll be separate.
Right, I understand. I just. I'm on right.
Jeremy?
You're welcome.
Mr. Potter, report.
Yes, a couple of things on the parks. Park, the council wanted to pave, I'll call it one, one and two parking lot, which is close to the nursing home. And then the park board wanted to pave down at the bike trail, the very south parking lot. So park board got the chip to calculate about the same amount of square yardage. And it basically includes the circle down at, down at, by the.
Scoring.
Ten, ten, not, not down to the ten score, just the circle there right inside at the shelters. Just that loop is about approximately the same square footage as the other two parking lots. So the school board, or the school board, the park board voted to do that because it was in worse shape and got used more often. Thought it was, their money better spent that way. It's about two and a half times more than they expected it to be. So it was going to be a hundred and nine thousand dollars of the park board's money. So I went to the city and see if I could get them. Judy has agreed to carry, the city to carry half of it, maybe over one year, so it doesn't all come out of the park. One in one year. And maybe I'm trying to get it for two years, so we can spread it out over more years. Park money. So the city's basically running the park part of it. We don't use all of our.
Oh, you're fine. I was going to say, what about the other expenses for the park as far as maintenance?
Yeah, that's why we can't afford to do it all in one year.
So there. There's huge general fund money for half of it and parks money for the other.
And then the next year, the park will pay the city back.
It'll be an advance.
It'll be an advance so that we can get more done, cheaper rate. And she's going to do it for one year for sure. I'm going to see if I can't get her to do it for that two years.
Save that part.
Save one part in the long run.
Yes.
And then the dumpster that's in, I'll call it the middle lot where the maintenance building is. The city got a grant for that for twenty-five thousand dollars. It was a seventy-thirty grant. So for twenty-five thousand dollars, the city end up asking to pay about nine, or the park, I should say, the park is paying nine thousand dollars. But we're moving that dumpster from where it is now up beside the maintenance building. And then putting concrete, tying into the concrete that was poured there and all in front of the maintenance building. Keep the garbage truck out of the parking lot where it's rudding up the whole parking lot or the whole area in front of the dumpster. But now it'll be going through the, through the parking lot, dumping the dumpster, packing back out, and then just driving back out to parking lot. There'll be no, no setting in the parking lot dumping its load, breaking the laptop down like it has now.
Should I take over?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sure where we're looking.
So this is, the nursing home is right here.
Okay.
And then this is the park, the two parking lots.
Okay.
The city council wanted to do. Park board did not want to do these two. They wanted to do the one down there.
Yeah.
So they opted not to do these and to do that. The council will approve that. The dumpster was right here. They rented up this, I didn't want them to put new parking lot and leave the dumpster in the same spot. My suggestion was to move the dumpster here to the building. Now the garbage truck will come in here. Dump, I can hear, come back down.
Yeah, in the middle of.
I was. I guess.
So the dumpster and the concrete and all that being moved has been approved by the park. That's been done. Money has already been approved. Now, as far as I know, it has to be approved, or moving the lot has to be approved by the council.
I guess my concern is stretching the park board, our.
Money.
Money.
That's correct. It has to. Couldn't do it if we didn't stretch it out over a couple of years or three. City.
You have a lot of money left to run the parks.
Yes, this is the separate money for that, or like the project money. But not do it if we did not have, if we did not do it over a couple of years, if the city didn't furnish the money. MMI at the flagpole got poured, John Longworth poured that, did a real good job. And as far as the pool go, we're having a pool meeting will be Wednesday. I don't know how to be getting this.
Did John donate that?
John donated his labor, yes, and SRM donated the concrete. So that was all, all free. It was ten yards of concrete poured the base back like it was and approximately seventy feet of sidewalk back out toward the, for the building. Yep. And like I said, the pool, pool meeting will be Wednesday. That's all my reports.
I passed over zoning. Do you have anything?
I don't have much. Three permits written in February, rooftop solar panels on Moira Road, rooftop solar panels on Jamaica Road, and a steel frame garage on Public County Line Road. The quarterly meeting of Germantown Township Zoning Commission will be held on Tuesday, April fourth. Happy to announce that the vacant seat for an alternate for the zoning commission was filled by Ms. Tricia Taylor. EB Road. We welcome her to the zoning commission as an alternate.
Membership on both boards, which is good. Jake?
All right, I've just got a couple of things tonight. I'd like to announce the cemetery board has hired a new sexton. The, the person we hired is Keith Burnett. He lives in the township, I believe, on Oxford Road. He will be, he actually started on March first, and he will be working with Mark Steinaker until he retires on June first. They'll be working together so Keith can learn everything, not everything, but everything he can while the two of them work together. So I know he, he participated in his first funeral last Friday, and he, he's working with Mark and the staff. Um, and he, he's working with Mark and the staff on, on learning the ins and outs of the cemetery, and he worked there before, so he knows a little bit, but he's getting the full, the full course right now. So I'm happy that Keith is there. We had several great candidates apply, but Keith, I know Keith will do a fantastic job, and I'm excited to have him. Um, he, happy to have him for sure. Again, Mark retires June first, so, uh, the door, right after Labor Day. Mark wanted to work through Labor Day. Um, Memorial, or I'm sorry, Memorial Day, and, uh, let, let Keith see the process and the buildup because Memorial Day is like the Super Bowl of the cemetery because everyone comes in and they've got to have it looking as best as possible. So um, we're gonna be spoiled for a little bit because we have an extra worker. Uh, we've made it work in the budget. To, to make sure we have everything in line, but, uh, moving forward, I think we're in good hands. So other than that, the cemetery looks pretty good. We're scheduled to have some of the, uh, trees that are in pretty bad shape come down whenever Brit Tree Service can make it in. We've already scheduled with them, or contracted with them. Uh, next W R C G, as Mister Heaton mentioned earlier, uh, we met, we discussed, the board discussed that we do have one three-year extension left with Rumkey. Kristen Hammacher from Jackson Township is, was going to reach out to Rumkey. Chandra, our representative, to, um, see what processes to go forward. So we're planning on going with a three-year extension unless Rumkey comes back with an outrageous amount. Uh, we are planning to meet again on the twenty-first, which I believe is next week at six thirty at the Jackson Township Building. Hopefully with the information back from Rumkey, then we can then bring back to our board um, to approve going forward with the, the next three-year extension with Rumkey. So, um, other than that, that actually, that's all I have tonight. So that concludes my report.
So you're gonna try to get that three-year renewal before the other, before the next year runs out?
Yeah, so our contract, we, we go through September of this year, I believe. Um, so our plan is to take this three-year extension. Um, and if for whatever reason it doesn't work, we'll go out to bid now, which would not be beneficial, I don't believe, with the current economic situation. So we're trying to do the three-year extension.
And Grumpy kind of has us over a barrel because if no one else, no one else has bid for that.
Well, Rumkey knows that when they, when this went out seven years ago, that they were the only company that turned in a bid. However, when we went through the process, Rumkey was there, Waste Management was there. And was it Republic or Allied? Allied was there. So the three of them went through the process, and then the two dropped out the day of the, we expected them to show up at the bid, and they did not come. So, um, if we go out to bid again, you, now I don't think it's a great time. Um, like I said, hopefully we can go with a three-year extension. Kristen, who is the Jackson Township Shauna, basically, uh, she lives in Preble County, and she, they don't have trash service through their township. She lives on the township, Gladys Township, I believe. Uh, so she has to contract her own trash pickup, and it's a hundred dollars a quarter for her. So we're significantly cheaper going this route. Um, but when this does come back, um, I'm sure once we get the price, I'm gonna have to ask the board to increase the trash price because we're, we're cutting it way too thin right now. Uh, and once the price comes back, I, I'm for sure, we're gonna have to increase the bill. If I remember correctly, the Jackson Township that's at sixty dollars um, a quarter, so slightly above us.
It was higher than us. I don't remember the number.
It was right sixty even. So, um, we're definitely on the low side still. Um, and there's gonna, we're gonna have to bump it up just a couple of dollars to make it, make us not lose money on this, so. That's all I have.
Okay. Sure, uh, I told, I let this week, but next week I'd be available, tear the building down.
Yes.
Anytime they want to get the dumpster.
Okay. Uh, Mark actually mentioned that tonight, so. Thank you very much again, because that's, that's gonna take a huge burden off of them and time, time-wise, and it's just gonna, it's gonna be great. So greatly appreciated.
I do?
That's it.
So, um, basically, most of my report is reporting about the Germantown Council meeting they attended it last Monday. Uh, during the citizens forum, I did discuss the pool levy language. And again, uh, hopefully they'll let their residents know what's going on so that they're not confused. Tried to get some information on the Nelda, Nelda Lane Judy gift to the senior center as I was on this, as I am on the senior oversight. And after some initial feedback, I was informed that citizens forum was not meant for dialogue, and then I was not able to ask further questions. So, um, I, they legal, by their so I got my head slapped, literally, but, uh, I did email Julie Gililand on three eight and got some answers. The city still doesn't know the amount of the gift. The gift will be placed in a separate account, and the gift will only be used for the senior center. My concern is that, again, you, you throw that money in the general fund, we won't know where it happens to. At the, uh, citizens forum, I did briefly discuss using Star Ohio account for the gift money to get better interest. As it happened, the council approved a resolution designated Farmers and Merchants Bank as the public depository for all Germantown funds. So unfortunately, probably not getting much interest there, but.
That was a surprise when I saw that.
Yeah.
They've been with First National as long as I can remember.
Yeah. The city has, has entered a contract with Cincinnati Urban Design and Architecture Studio for assistance in preparation of a redevelopment plan for the downtown. Total cost of that was fifty thousand dollars, thirty-seven five came from, was paid by a grant, all five was paid by the city. So the biggest highlight, you know.
I was just gonna say, I'm on the Economic Development Committee. We are meeting with Urban Design and the other participants in that contract uh, this coming Thursday.
So, yeah, so I don't know what they're gonna do different, but, oh, we got a door, so we'll see.
Um, the door will be part of the full evaluation of the downtown area.
So the biggest highlight was the city passed an emergency ordinance to purchase three partials owned by Dave Bishop for one hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The goal, according to the council, was to develop the backlots for public parking, and the use of the garage is still being investigated. Ironically, the only other person to speak at the citizens forum was Clay Alseth complaining that the city bought the property before anyone else had a chance to purchase and develop the property. Company council did not explain where the funds came for to purchase the property, so.
It's kind of how they bought their city building.
Yeah, so it doesn't sound like they gave anybody else a chance to buy it.
That explains the Joe Collins sole sign.
You know, they don't know where they get the money. Can't really answer any, answer any questions.
General idea where they get the money. It's administrative fees on our joint levers. This one.
So that basically is all I have. Uh, do we, we got an offer to, um, Symphony Wireless to possibly buy the cell tower?
I sent you the information that I received. I don't know whether anybody wishes to reach out to them to.
But didn't it say the tower on Weaver Road?
They did mention the address on Weaver. I don't understand what that is all about, but unless we contact them, we won't know. But if you have any desire to do that, they did talk about it in a voicemail being.
We don't own the tower, though.
That's what, that's always questioned.
No, they tried to sell it to us, and we wouldn't, we didn't take it.
We don't own the tower, but we can put
Yeah.
Things on, we can allow things to be put on.
Now, that I thought the prosecutor told us we couldn't do under the lease agreement with the state.
But the least the state is paying us.
For the land. Not the tower. We don't, they tried to sell us the tower for a dollar, and we did not accept.
So then.
The owner's not listed, so the lease is only for the land.
Okay.
Right, am I right on that? Because they tried to sell us the tower, and we did not, we did not. Because then we'd be responsible for it.
Now we could have sold it.
That's my question, the legality, do we actually own the tower to be able to sell it?
We don't.
I don't believe we own the tower. But I, I always thought that the trustees had the option to put to allow other carriers to go on it.
It was supposed, there was a, an amount, and I don't remember what it is, because this is, this is twenty fifteen-ish, I think. Um, there's, it was a set amount, so we were to get, I'm just gonna throw a number out there, not, I'm just guessing, sixty percent of whatever, whatever came in, and then the state were, would get the rest of it.
Didn't you, about a year and a half, two years ago, have an inquiry about putting something on the tower? You reached out to the prosecutors?
Yeah, they, we could not. I don't remember that. I know the company, the guy I reached out, he never got back with me. It was an internet provider. That's, that fell through, but.
They allowed ham radio to go on it. That was done to the state.
Yeah.
Not getting paid anything, and they're not paying anything to the government, so it's not revenue generating. State did allow that.
But if I remember the original contract, but this is almost nine years ago. But if any, if we got anybody to go on there, we gotta, the percentage is already laid out in the contract. We got X amount of dollars just based on percentage, and then this county at the time, and then now the state will get the rest of it.
I would say then that there's no reason to reach out to Symphony.
Exactly. Do you know when the last day of school is relevant? June second. I think that's something we ought to think about is when school is out, you know, go over the S O O contract, go, how much, figure out how much the S O R actually called, S R O actually costs. Because again, you know, I feel that it should all be paid by the school.
I think they're looking into grants for next year. This, Dewine and his administration is, has, that was a focus, one of the focuses they came up with, is provide funding for school resource officers. So I, I know Value is aware, and I'm not sure what they're, they would have to be the ones to apply for the grant, and, uh, but I know they're aware of it.
So I think if, if we can figure out what it actually cost us and how much, how, how far that thirty-three thousand dollars went. I think it's up to us to buy the like, put money into supplying the S R O for the school. So anyway, we got a few more stories. Any other new business or old business? Anything?
Oh, I have a, a question or two. What day is the shred?
May sixth. It's a Saturday.
What time?
Nine AM to eleven A M. Ten to twelve, see voters.
It says nine to eleven on here. So it's ten to twelve. Okay.
It's now ten to twelve. The trustees drop off the day before. Thirty drops off the day before. Your story.
Thing else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
We are adjourned at seven forty-three.